I'd like to call the order of this work-study session of White Bear Lake Area School Board for Monday, October 26th. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Bellloy.
Here.
Chapman.
Here.
Ellison.
Here.
Fahey here. Mullen.
Here.
Newmaster.
Here.
Wilson.
Okay, first discussion item is B1. Elementary specialist discussion of scope and timeline. Dr. Kazmicek.
All right, I'll just turn it over to Ms. Ball. Jump right in. Ms. Ball.
Chair, Mullen, Dr. Kazmicek, members of the board. We have several people joining us tonight to have a conversation about our offerings that we have in the elementary schools for our specialist programming. We had identified this as a strategic priority this fall, and the priority was to review elementary visual arts programming in the context of our elementary art offerings and overall specialist offerings. And so what we want to do is we want to go through each aspect of the programming that we have, talk about things that are working, going well, give some context, and then talk about the continuous improvement efforts that are underway this year, because we really can't talk about one-piece art without talking about the full context of all of our offerings. And so we're going to have two of the principals and the principal group joining us, and they're going to represent each of the specialist areas. And we're going to be discussing physical education, art, orchestra and general music, media, and world language. So with that, we'll have Ms. Sphere and Mr. Cruzmark join us for FIED is what we'll start with.
Good evening, everyone.
Welcome.
Hello, thanks for having us.
Well, when you're walking and your fingers do the talking to the computer, it moves your screen, it kind of messes you up here. Just give me a moment. So we're here to talk just a little bit about physical education and kind of refreshing everyone's memory on the purpose of White Bear Lake Area Schools' physical ed programming. Really to, you know, remember that we want students to learn skills necessary to perform activities, no implications and benefits from being physically active.
Sir, can you have me a little bit closer?
A little closer, sure. And then, you know, knowing that it's important to participate in physical activity, being physically fit, really, I guess, I'm kind of saying a lot of like being bear power aware, right? Which is always something a lot of our students connect with, with that terminology. So, but moving forward.
Got it. So another thing that we're doing is we have the Active Classroom Grant, and this past fall, two ambassadors from each of our sites met and were trained in September, and they are bringing the training back to our building. So at Vadniss, and I know at Lake Ayers, and most of the buildings, they took opportunity in building professional development to share the information back, because it's tools that they can use in the classroom with the students to increase movement for kids, both before school, after school, and within the classroom time. So their proactive wellness strategies connected to social, emotional learning that focuses on this Active Classroom Grant.
And Lake Ayers was one of the sites that hosted the initial training. We had a kind of revolving door with different folks. I know Tim was there, and we had different teachers and administrators rolling through, and it was really fun to see these administrators and adults getting into the actual activities that kids will be, or in some cases, have been doing already. And the cool thing, I thought, from a lot of this was really finding neat ways to embed it in the everyday curriculum. They're tying math, or literacy, or spelling to these activity events during the school day, and the kids, from what I've seen so far, being embedded into our building, they're really getting into it. And we all know that kinesthetic learning and lots of different modalities is great for kids, and adults, too. So it's been really fun, and our shareback was well-received from staff, and they were already thinking how they would differentiate some of the things that they heard to their own unique level of student and their individual needs. So it was pretty exciting. All right? That's all I have.
There's also the District Wellness Committee, and that's a committee, again, of representatives across all of our sites, where they bring opportunities for our staff to be physically active, and there's a variety of things, and it changes each year, to encourage people to be active and set a good example for our students. Dr. Kazmicek, out running marathons and promoting that is a fabulous way to get us all motivated. So thank you very much for that. As you all likely know, at present, our specialist schedule is on a six-day rotation, and students receive FIED 45 minutes at the elementary level twice in that six-day cycle. And we recognize that that is not enough. We have 20 or 25 minutes at all of our elementary sites, where students have recess each and every day, and the only exception is based on the wind chill, which determines whether or not kids are able to go outside, and hopefully we get them out, or if there's rain that doesn't allow us to get outside. Otherwise, they take advantage of that 25 minutes each and every day. As we move forward, we know there's implementation of new state academic physical education standards, and that's happening as we speak, and so there's a lot of training and learning that we continue to go through as liaison of the FIED department. I can assure you that when they meet, they're looking at this information and talking about it, and what that means for us right here in White Bear Lake. We work very closely with Ann Mollwitz to make sure that everything is in written and in plan, so everybody knows what we are working on and what our goals are in the area of physical education.
Right. I will, can we, are you okay if we just, each section, we just open it up to questions regarding that section? So any questions regarding physical education? Ms. Ellison.
Do you happen to know when the new FIED standards that come out?
It's this year, is my understanding.
It's to be in effect next fall?
Full implementation during the 2021-22 school year.
2021-22, okay. Yes.
Ms. Bellloy.
What are the changes to those standards? Do we know?
I can't speak to those specifically, I'm sorry.
We are going to, in January, the FIED...
In January, the FIED teachers are scheduled to attend a training to find out specifically from the Minnesota Department of Education what the new changes will be with the standards. So we have a group working K-12, as well as at each elementary, middle school, and high school level to find that out.
Other questions regarding physical education? Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, our next discussion is going to be around our art offerings at the K-5 level, and Mr. Lucknick and Mr. Schmidt will be leading this conversation.
Welcome.
Good evening, and I'm Jonathan Lucknick. I'm the principal at Birch Lake. Thanks for your time, and having the opportunity to give a little context and what steps we're taking in terms of continuous improvement around arts programming and instruction. So to kind of set the stage for that and get a real understanding of it, it helps to go back to 2008, which is the last time they did a major revision of the arts standards and requirements for districts within the arts. And so at that time, they put into place some new standards that encompassed the areas of arts that were kind of organized into different grade bands. So there were standards for kindergarten through third, fourth, and through fifth, and then sixth through eighth, and ninth through 12, where some of the grade bands had each had their distinct standards. They identified at that time four different areas of the arts: dance, music, theater, and visual arts. And they asked or required, they, meaning the Minnesota Department of Education, required districts to offer at least three out of those four areas, with two of those three offerings to be required, things that were built into the curriculum across all the school, elementary and middle schools. So at that time, our district took the direction of focusing on dance and music as the two areas that would be required or offered across the board, and done in a manner consistent with those standards that were put into place. So as you might know, and to this time, we have music as a standalone specialist class, and I know that they, at that time, and to this day, they have a very systematic way of making sure they cover all those standards and assess them, and work on them in their collaborative times as well. And the dance aspect of that, which was the other required offering of the two, was embedded within the physical education curriculum, or the activities they did within physical education spoke to some of the movement standards and things within dance. And finally, there was a third area, which although not required, like the two that the state asked, was offered, was done in conjunction with the White Bear Center for the Arts, with the partnership with them, to bring in some visual arts to each elementary school. And this was intended more as an enrichment-type opportunity, and not as the two required areas that were to encompass the standards that were put into place. And in addition to that, there are several other enrichment opportunities in the arts. Like at Birch Lake, we have the McFail program, and there are theatrical opportunities in various elementary schools, and as you know, many other things like that going on within our district. But at that time, that was kind of the core framework that was put into place. And so now I'll turn it over to Principal Schmidt to talk a little bit more about that partnership with the White Bear Center and the next steps we're pursuing this year.
Thank you. So some of this you already know, but we'll just repeat it as a foundation piece. So since 2008, we have this wonderful partnership with the White Bear Center of the Arts. We have an annual agreement with them, and it's to provide, through local community artists, an art experience for all of our K through five elementary students in every classroom. It's gone very well. The artists have been pretty consistent over those years. The kids are getting to know those artists well, and they're building a relationship with them. So the success of that partnership has really been seen through the eyes of the kids. Now, as you know, there's a total of six lessons that are in place for this current school year. Three of them focus on watercolor, two on drawing, one on multi, excuse me, multicultural paper arts, and 3D art lessons. Now, five of those lessons are 45 minutes in length, and then the 3D art lesson is 75 minutes in length, obviously because it takes a little bit longer. And students, they don't receive a grade, they don't receive credit for this, but they also don't lose anything out of this. It's all about experience and giving kids an opportunity just to see some form of media that they normally don't get exposed to. Now, as you realize, the cost of this is around $85,000, and what's nice is that the kids are getting this type of experience and can kind of dabble in a medium that they have never really focused on before. And it is pretty exciting to see that investment take hold within their own excitement. Some schools, though, about six of them, try to enhance this through art enrichment activities at a cost of about $15,000 combined with everyone, and I think you're all aware of the financial piece for that. The one thing that we do require as a district is that, once the local artist is within the classroom, the classroom teacher, licensed teacher, has to be with that class during that session. Now, where do we go from here? Minnesota Department of Education is now in a rulemaking phase of creating new K-12 academic standards in the area of the arts. So we have dance, music, theater, and visual arts, which were the previous arts standards. Those are still in place, and the additional one is called media arts. Media arts is the fifth one now that's in place. They're trying to make this connect more with the national core art standards. So that's taking place right now. One of the major changes that you're going to notice within these standards is that the previous standards were in grade bands, K-3, 4, 5, 6, 8, so forth. Now, these are going to be individual grades, K-1, 2, obviously that way. Now, what we'll do as a district is we're going to have a team of administrators and teachers. We're going to kind of take these new standards over time, just unpack them, try to figure out where the gaps are between what's currently in place and that we can support, and what are some of the other areas that we still need to enhance further. And then, one other aspect of it, because of our strategic plan, we're also going to look at these different five areas and see, in some way, are we going to be able to support the social and emotional learning aspect of the child through these standards in some place. So that's our report on the arts. Do we have any questions?
Yeah. Ellison.
I have two questions. One, same question as before, do you know when these new standards will be implemented?
Well, they're in the rulemaking phase right now, and Ann can help me with this, which is 2018. I'm assuming it's probably the same timeline or close to it.
They went out for public comment at the end of May.
They went out for public comment at the end of May, and we have not received any information as far as, and the next point we'll get will be the timeline and kind of the larger planning scheme. I anticipate that this year.
Okay. And the other question I have is, could you expand a little on what media arts means?
Oh, I sure can. Let me see here. All right. It is an understanding of the artistic work influenced, and influenced by personal, societal, cultural, and historical context. So they're taking it further into the different aspects of our demographic makeup, and trying to see how the media arts, how arts is impacted or connected to the different demographic groups, or just the different, the makeup that we have within our community, local community.
So it's a window and a mirror?
Absolutely. Well said, thank you. Yeah.
Other questions? Okay.
All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
All right. The next area we're going to talk about is orchestra and general music, with Principal Leiniger and Principal Mueller.
Hello, I'm Cynthia Mueller, principal at Otter Lake. Thank you for having us here. John and I are going to provide some context related to actually another arts portion, which is our music arts program, talking more specifically about orchestra. It was about four years ago that we started to explore the orchestra option, and it was a committee that was kind of charged with looking at that, and how do we develop options for a string orchestra program for our students? We are now in what we believe the third year of, fourth year, are we in the fourth year? Wow, time flies. We're in the fourth year of the implementation of this, and just to also provide some really important context to the success of this program, it's offered for our fifth-grade students only, and it's in addition to general music class. So they receive the general music, and then they have the option for signing up for orchestra. This year, we have 350 out of our 680 fifth-grade students, so percentage-wise, that's 51% of our fifth-grade students are involved in the orchestra program. Another context for that is, last year, we had 265 students. We almost increased by 100 students over this year. And so it's really great things to celebrate that we're able to provide these opportunities for our students, but there's also some, now we have some kind of growing pieces with that.
So I get to take a few minutes. Again, thank you for having me. I'm John Leiniger, principal at Matoska International. So in that context that Cynthia was just talking about, we're thinking about where we take a program like this into the future, and we're spending a lot of time thinking about how this program, in a very short amount of time, has really expanded quickly. And our delivery model early on isn't the same kind of delivery model that we see, foresee in the future, particularly with the kind of growth. So some of the things we're thinking about is, how do we schedule this? How does it fit within the broader context of the arts? You know, as principals before us were talking about, how does this fit within a context of general music? And then how do we take these really great things and continue to provide those opportunities, and provide that time during the school day? And more importantly, as we talk about how that impacts our instructional programs, and how do we deliver good programs within that context? Really, the summary is, is it started out small, it was this great idea, and it's really grown into a significant program, and our delivery model early on needs to adjust with the success of that program. So without easy answers, and there are many of the things that we're talking about, and we're meeting with our music teachers, we're meeting with other principals and colleagues and saying, what is the best way that we can do that that will fit within the context of that growing model? We also are included, as Mr. Schmidt talked about earlier, the current standards, the answers, the questions are the same, because the art standards also include those music standards as well. So with that, are there any questions or thoughts that we can answer for you? Yes?
I'm thinking of historical perspective, because I'm old, and I remember teaching, or being the media specialist at Lake Ayers Elementary, and grew across the hall from the media center, was where they did the string lessons. So I remember it very well. And I do remember, basically, the massive cuts in '82, when the orchestral program, I believe that's when it went. So we had it in the '70s, and it at least survived until '82, and then I was teaching German at Mariner, and didn't notice anything that happened, that year, except teaching children. But I'm just wondering, if we look back to the past, if you have, and how big it was? Because I remember a lot of kids did it, and I also know the model, I have a son who's a professional musician, and I know at colleges, the string and the band program merged, do combine concerts and some music. So I don't know if you've looked at that model, and I wonder how many high schools had that model of maybe an orchestral, as well as a, you know, more the brass and percussion teachers working together with a band or concert band? You know, have you looked at how many high schools actually feel that? They used to, but that was back in the good old days.
I think those are great questions. I can't speak a lot towards the high school component, but a couple of thoughts that I have, those are the exact questions that we're asking, is how does a well-rounded music experience look here in White Bear Lake for all of our students, for an elementary school? And how do we pass those on into middle school and high schools? And I've had conversations with our middle school colleagues about, okay, how does this look, and how would it fit together? Because I think, you know, we've always maintained, or I would maintain, a strong, well-rounded music and arts component is really, really valuable. I would say that, you know, even in a context of looking at STEM and science, that it's, the arts really bring in that creativity part to all of our academic areas, and that our scientists need to be creative, our mathematicians need to be creative, that, and so we see that in our families as being an important component. How they all fit together, I think as you're referring to, is a really important question to ask. Because our orchestra program currently today is relatively new, those are the questions we have to see how it will evolve into that. I do know that, and I think you're referring, you know, as well, I can't speak to, you know, when there was a full orchestra program, but I do know that there's been strong orchestra elements in some schools throughout time, and then a few years ago, those were brought together to a more cohesive district-wide program.
I guess I'm just going to expand on that a little bit. It's kind of like looking at people marching up someplace and being at the boardroom, going into where are we going and what are we going to do? You've got them coming, and you must have had a concept of where it would go, because it was popular before, and it has been. You know, the thought of expanding our school day, I mean, anytime you add a huge, and it's a wonderful program, but I just, I just can't remember what happened to it the last time, other than all of a sudden, ooh, it was gone. And how big was it? That would be, it's got to be in the yearbooks or something. What happened to it? And I think it's wonderful, we're offering it, but, and I know we've added room to store new musical instruments at the middle school and at the high school, so we've already kind of started making a little corner, but it looks like it's a growing program. So I think we need to know what the goal is.
Well, our program was designed to go through grade 12, and the delivery model works in middle and high school. I think the challenge is that there are so many kids taking orchestra in fifth grade that it's, we got to think about how all the parts fit together if we're going to have it in fifth grade, because our delivery model and approach works six through 12, and we do have the capacity to have a robust orchestra and band program. So our design and how we've rolled it out for it to grow up through the high school, we're well-positioned for. It's just this opportunity of the first year being in fifth grade, and how it's really grown beyond the way that we thought we could deliver it. And so now we just have to engage people in conversation and figure out how we're going to keep all the parts fitting together, and that's the focus for this year.
I do think the advantage of it starting in fifth grade was a wonderful advantage, because when band moved to middle school, there weren't any kids below seeing the joys of it. So orchestra has had that added punch with all the younger students that band used to have when it was K-6, and you were a big kid, and you started taking summer band after fifth grade. So I think it's going to continue to be popular, it's just how would we cultivate and develop it, and make sure that, you know, we have a marvelous marching band, and we have lots of good things, and somehow they'll have to fit. It's kind of like you teach a lot of languages, and as they progress, oh, is there room for everything? A longer day. Thank you.
No, Ann, I just started to comment, because I know where the middle facility planning is also, but I went to one of the first fifth-grade orchestra concerts, and to really benefit the students, we've got to think about giving them a performance space also, that accounted with the numbers of students, because we were cramming people to that gym. There was room for the orchestra, but there really wasn't.
Yes.
So it's a reality, yes, our programs grow, and we're talking about planning for things we don't know about, and we really have to think about performance spaces also.
It's boring.
Do we know what the percentage of the fifth graders of orchestra transfer to middle schools and to orchestra?
I don't have that number on the top of my head. I've had conversations with the middle school principals, but I don't have that. It's a significant number.
I'm sorry, I'll say it again. I don't have that number on the top of my head. I have conversations with the middle school principals, and it's a significant number to which we continue to expand that upward into the high school.
You can get that number.
We can, yeah.
Six graders are in the program, now it reaches 265.
What was the average number of fifth graders and how we transition to sixth? And then my other question, because I actually have a sixth grader who studied orchestra in fifth grade and continued off to do it, and I can see the challenges with, because there's pullouts constantly for orchestra, and it seems like we're doing a lot of this, pulling out of classes, so like at sixth grade, you have orchestra as class, that's every other day, but then you have lessons that are spent on, and you get pulled out of various classes, and it's interesting, because it takes away from something else, and I would love to see us be able to put more focus on just doing one thing, instead of having children do too many things and trying to catch up with them afterwards after that, if that makes any sense? It was the same thing in fifth grade, because they do, they have to pull out to do orchestra in the first grade. It seemed to go pretty well, and I'd love to see us just, what do you do, music, and maybe singing and all that?
That's the exact thing that we're wrestling with, which was, with the start of the program was much smaller, and the impact was smaller. Now, with so many students being involved, it impacts the school day a lot more, and that's what we have to try to figure out, because it does mean that something gives somewhere along the way.
Have any ideas to abandon around? Do you have a possibility?
Lots and lots and lots of ideas. There are many ideas out there. It's really trying to put it in the context of our strategic plan, the school day, and that's really why we're talking about meeting with our fifth-grade teachers in our music department to see how it fits together. I know you looked at your mind, and add something to that.
Well, I think, well, I think what you added about the strategic planning in that context, also a context of equity, right? That we want to be able to provide this, that anybody that, if we're having this opportunity, that anybody could participate in it. And I think it's the importance of who we're bringing to the table is really that diverse perspective, so, you know, having the music teacher, the orchestra teachers, fifth-grade teachers who are seeing the impact on the students, and the instructional scheduled day. who are seeing the impact on the students and the instructional scheduled day. So really trying to bring all of that together. Yeah, we've, yeah, it's bringing the group together.
How is the equity piece for that family that can't afford to rent a viola or rent a cello or what? How is that being made out of the role?
We have a scholarship system set up. So if families are unable to rent one on the outright, they can work with the orchestra teacher and the building principals, and we'll make sure that they will be able to have an estimate.
Is that coming out of the building budget? Is that a brand? Where's that money, the scholarship money coming from?
Out of a district budget.
Just one more. And I think because I have two adult kids who went through Waper's marvelous music program and both became professionals. So I remember, as a mom on my way to north, dropping kids off for jazz band. And we have a great jazz band program. And they practiced, and I guess you call it the zero hour in middle school, and they did, I don't know if they still do. But that was an extra thing. It'd be nice if they get out of these probably from their orchestra program. But I'm just wondering, you've got that model of, you know, jazz is an extra because you've got band, you've got language, you've got whatever else you're doing. How many zero hours can our kids do and how many can the classroom teacher handle? Because they already have a huge student load. When you look at the number of kids a band teacher or an orchestra teacher has and all the lessons that they teach, to add a zero hour on top of that, now I look at that and I think your FTE is stretched.
So, I have just a quick question. As a mean mom who did not sign her fifth grade orchestra, she is worried about what she'll find next year in sixth grade when she does sign her orchestra. So is that, can I put her fears to rest?
You are always welcome to put her fears to rest. No, I think, I mean, obviously, I would believe there are going to be students that have not also taken this. You know, they maybe didn't the first go around and now they've seen it and, oh, I want to try that. So I think there'll always be, and I know because they do the balance of large group and small group lessons, I think that's how it will, yeah.
Moving them together, the ones that had it before, the small and tall students, your support kids at a time, and retention, put them together by grade level.
Okay. That's an equity question, too. That if the students who can't afford it or just don't have the ability to get to an extra thing, I wouldn't want them to be behind.
I've certainly heard the term orchestra, elementary orchestra, many, many, many times. What actually does it encompass in terms of instrumentation? First question, and then the second. If there's multiple instruments, who chooses? The student or the teacher? Are we coming together of the two? How's that decided?
So, and I never was in the orchestra, full disclosure, but I've been privileged to be part of it. So, good question. So, you know, viola, violin, viola, bass, cello. Yeah. And it's really, yeah, it's pretty amazing and it's really fun to see these kids coming, you know, off the school bus. Or parents coming in. It's like, okay. And the choosing of the instrument is actually kind of.
Violin, viola, cello?
Cello and bass. Yep, you know, the full gamut. And the choosing is really a collaborative process where the orchestra teacher will work with the students and the families to say, okay, you know, how does this fit? How does the instrument fit in one of your desires? You know, probably a lot like band was, you know, for those of us who went through band and say, okay, you know, your interests are in this area and these are the instrumentations that might fit. It's not a cut and dry, in elementary school at least, it's not a cut and dry, here you go. But we're trying to find that balance because we're, you know, we want to provide those good skills, but we also want to build the excitement for it. And part of that is make sure students and families are, the voices are part of that.
There's also an orientation base to it. Where everyone, this one day, or any kid that was interested in it, go try out different instruments and then choose from there.
So in the elementary program, you strictly string instruments. And then the continuity is when you hit middle school, that's where you get the rhythms and percussion and everything else put together. And Marge, my recollection is that it was referred to as a symphonic band.
The group that mixed all the instruments together.
Yeah, it was all instruments.
Yeah, that's what I thought. It's not a separate program. You just started strings earlier. And I guess, I'm just wondering, was there any, as you talked about equity and how we enjoy something later, I remember something about, you had to have piano lessons, or they didn't let you take a certain instrument, probably that thin mom. But it really wasn't equitable because it was just the kid that happened to be forced to go to piano lessons from grade one. Mom thought it was a great idea. So is that still a requirement for some instruments? Do you say we prefer that you've had some piano? So first kids are way ahead.
Not in elementary school.
Okay. That's why I said.
I can't speak to the middle school band program, I'm sorry.
You have to have piano before you can do percussion?
Yeah, they do require it still then. I thought so. That went out of all, went out of all the wood and rumors. So that is an equity thing.
Sir Chairman?
Given this relatively new program, still kind of a novelty feel, I think, out there, have you done any research, contacted up in districts and so forth, that have implemented an orchestra program to see after so many years, you know, what their experience was? Did it plateau out? Did it start sliding backward in terms of the amount of interest? Anything done along those lines?
That's a great suggestion. This is really trying to show you the direction of our focus this year. And so we're going to be doing a lot of reaching out, a lot of exploring of ideas, a lot of figuring out how orchestra fits in the broader, full experience that we're providing to our students. And so these comments and questions are very, very helpful.
Are there any questions? Comments? Okay, thank you very much.
Principal Healy and Principal Dullum actually have a PTO meeting tonight. And so we have teacher Julie Stonehouse here with us. And then Ann Mullitz is also going to be talking with us about our media programming.
Just a reminder of how we got here. During the 2017-2018 school year, the Onika Future Ready Task Force, consisting of teacher, innovation coaches, media specialist, Washington County library staff, and district administrators, met to really reimagine library spaces and talk about how to make something future-ready. And so had a full year of discussion. And then an opportunity presented itself so that we were able to then look at two different programming, media and then the Gifted and Talented Program, and to do, think about an innovative way to enhance and strengthen both programs by doing some combining of the two. So this year, we're doing a pilot program that aligns and actually supports thinking within our strategic plan. One strategic item being student agency. And then the other strategic plan, as far as all students being able to have enrichment. And so they designed, in three of our buildings, media and gifted combined together, integrated in an effort to maximize student and teacher interactions, as well as to create a more collaborative environment between staff. And so this is the first year. And we are very fortunate to have Julie Stonehouse, who is one of our media and gifted. And she would be willing to share a little bit about her experience.
Thank you for including me tonight. I am Julie Stonehouse, as Ann said. I am this year at Onika Elementary in both roles as the media specialist and gifted enrichment support teacher. And I have to say that I feel a little bit like a kid sitting at the grown-up table for Thanksgiving. Terry Dullum had asked me to sit in tonight just because I am living this pilot program this year. Just to field any questions that you might have, a really brief description of how these two programs are working together at Onika, anyway, is I alternate because my job is 50% media specialist and 50% gifted enrichment teacher. And so I alternate days. On the odd days, I do gifted enrichment support. And on the even days, I'm in the media center. The advantage of me being in one school with both of these roles is that I am easily accessible to teachers for support in both capacities. And just the opportunity to really create some nice connections with students on an ongoing basis. So for the gifted kids that I work with, I see them every other day for reading and math. And then, again, on the odd or the even days, I'm in the media center doing media support and lessons with all classes.
Is that still the Reach program?
It is the Reach program, although we're working on, it looks a little different this year at Onika. We're trying some new things to make it a little more collaborative with what's happening in the classrooms. We're trying to do more pushing in rather than pulling out.
It seems like there's been sort of a, I think it started Reach, what, seven years ago? I don't say. I know it's gone through a change, almost like there's a single, senior teacher or such.
I believe the Reach program has been around. I have a daughter who's 25 and she was in it when she was in kindergarten. So it's been around for a while, but there have been different teachers, of course, that have been in the program delivering the instruction.
Other questions? Please do ask.
As a media specialist who was elementary, first 12 years I was in this district, and also the gifted activity person, that's, again, the idea's come around again. And you offered extra things, enrichment for students, some of it was pull-ups, some of it was after school. And I do think that one thing that media people do, and everyone here knows and are proponents, that elementary schools should be a full-time media person because that's the one position that, the research is there, it's the close, kind of the closer of the opportunity gap and the literacy gap and the reading gap. There's a lot of support for that. So I'm really glad to see one person in the job and you just have to span all the things like media people do. So I'm hoping that there will continue to be more support this way so we welcome the playing fields and all of our schools get equity the same way. Because everybody deserves a media specialist who covers literacy and format, offers things. We used to do things for preschool and we've got growing elementary classes. So we have a humongous job to do. And I'm impressed and proud and hopeful that we'll have more support and more support so that all kids have access to, you know, a full, robust elementary media program. Because it's a critical variable for all of our kids.
I would absolutely agree. I'm very passionate about both parts of my job. I love working with the gifted and high-performing learners. And I love my time in the media center, too. I do think that particularly with our focus on finding ways to increase student agency, I think the media centers are a perfect place to be well-positioned to do that, to be the real hub of learning in our buildings.
Can you just give an example of ways to show agency with the business program?
Are you thinking from the media side of things or more of the gifted enrichment support side? Well, the first thing I will tell you is that this is year one. So we are navigating the transition and navigating what that looks like, how we change and bring these two programs together. The other piece that I'm learning personally in the role, and especially up at Onika with a rather large staff, people have varying degrees of comfort with change. One example of how I think my two roles are coming together to support a classroom, I'm working with fourth grade, high-performing readers and the fourth grade teacher. So I'm collaborating in her classroom. The fourth graders in general in reading have been working on identifying themes in the books that they read. And so as I've come in and I'm working with that high-performing population, we took that idea and the lessons that they got in the classroom with identifying themes. And we decided to identify themes in a novel that they're reading. And then they're choosing a real-world example of that theme and doing some inquiry in that area and then learning about that real-world example and then how that ties into the theme they're reading. So for example, we were having a conversation this afternoon about the Battle of the Sexes because someone was reading a book called Save Me a Seat, and the theme they identified was you shouldn't prejudge other people. And so this student started learning about Billie Jean King and Bobby Riggs in the 1970s and how people prejudged women and thought they weren't as good at sports, which we all know, Billie Jean King proved wrong. So that's just an example of how I think that media side is coming together with the enrichment for the high-performing learners.
Other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we're going to conclude this session with world language. And John is going to come up and lead us in that discussion.
All right. I get to take a few minutes to talk about our world language program. And it's interesting. It's come quite a long way since 2012-13, when it was part of the strategic plan at that point to bring forward. And in review, it says in that, at that point, is that all students will expand their global perspectives through the study of world language and culture at the elementary schools. So we have built a wonderful program in all of our elementary schools. Two of our schools have Mandarin Chinese. The rest of our schools have Spanish language. And true to, you know, true to that, to that calling, I guess, is that we really focus in elementary school, again, on cultures and communication. So we spend a lot of time using our world language program to talk about the world, global perspectives, and different peoples, as well as how they communicate in the concrete part of learning, learning the language, learning Mandarin Chinese or learning Spanish. Some of our current focuses, we're really taking some time to think about our kindergarten curriculum. Really this year, we're thinking about how we're setting our expectations to better prepare our kindergarten students to move into those higher levels of languages. So it's just one of those natural reworkings, you know, after a number of times we say, okay, we need to think down, get down into it and think about our youngest learners. Kind of in a broader, longer-term focus, we're also thinking about and having conversations about how does our elementary world language program, in the future, how is that going to line up with and feed into middle school programs? And there's a lot of good work, you know, that everyone's doing. And I think, you know, one of our goals is to bring that good work from those upper grades and our elementary, you know, world language teachers together to become better aligned as well. We continue working with more training on comprehensible input. And then another interesting and important discussion is, as we're moving forward in the future, how could we better meet the unique needs of our heritage speakers? So many of our students will come to us with multiple language or, you know, mother tongues as we refer to, and how do we best support them in our schools? So our world language program's really come a long way. We're really excited about it. And, you know, we see a bright future and increasing need for not only language skills, but those cultures and contributions as well. I'll open it up for questions.
Question for your world language.
I have a question, some more kind of a comment. This is another of those areas to me that seems like a half measures. Both of my boys went through and did Spanish in elementary. A lot of it seemed more like a cultural, which is great. You got to know the culture, you did things to understand. It seemed more that than a language-based learning proposition. And another one of those things where it's more going in a week is, I'm not sure what the schedule is.
Once every third day.
Yeah, once around every three days. So it's, we're adding these things, or it's like, we're adding them to half measures, it kind of seems like sometimes because we have so many things we're trying to schedule into the day. And they're all important, it's just. they're all important, it's just, it seems like we really need to, same thing happens with middle schools, we're only now only doing that for a two quarters of the language when the second half don't have the language anymore. And now with people that teach different languages, it's, the impression that I'm getting really is that it's, if you really want someone to learn the language, it's a three-day class kind of situation, so I think we just have to either prioritize this and that, that's my personal comment. I love adding the language in, that it's, I think it's a great, it's a great piece, especially at a cultural level, we're adding so much, it just seems like we're doing a half measures.
I just would like to thank you for raising that because we spent a lot of time last year talking about our middle school programming and the schedule and the complexity of the schedule and how that was really at the core of the challenges we were having through all of those discussions. And it's hard to talk about the things that we're not going to be able to do if we're going to be able to do some things really well. And then we also have to balance that with a lot of happy people in our schools right now that really enjoy the programming that we're offering. And so when we look at each of these and why we wanted to talk about these comprehensively is because we spent a lot of time with the instructional leaderships, leaders at the elementary level and specifically all these principals who are providing that instructional leadership to say, we need to have some really important conversations that have to connect together all of these parts because one piece of this and making a decision around one element, it's got to be a horizontal and a vertical conversation and the thinking that went into these highlighted points to talk about how we're really going to focus on continuous improvement, we just really wanted to make sure that all of you were aware of all of the parts before we launch and dig into this work and then, and not have a shared understanding about how each of the parts has to fit together in the end in order to really provide the best programming possible.
I guess building on both of these things, I think it would be really interesting comprehensively to talk with the quiet music and language instructors on what their sense is of how they are getting their work done, getting the standards met on this every third day rotation, because I think you could ask any of these specialists and say, we need more time, you know, we need more physical activity, we need more music, we need more language. And so I would be interested to hear from those instructors about what their perspective is, you know, are they, do they feel like they are doing the job that they need to do in the time that's allowed in? Because it is wonderful, I love having all of those things and I think getting some of all of them at this younger level really trains kids' brains and bodies to be able to learn as they come on themselves, just something that I would like to see as you're moving forward.
Other new messages?
Okay, I'm looking at it partly from historical and partly from my own experience. I taught, my undergrad degree is in German and I've taught German two different times in this district and I still keep good contact with all the world language teachers. And everyone looks at how much time they have and what the scope and sequence is and how on earth do they bump along between elementary and then the middle school and then who's continuing down to really hit it and get that college and the schools level where you really have fluency and literacy in another language. And the reality of it is we're offering a palette to our youngest students a buffet. We're offering a wonderful buffet for our students. And I don't know if we can have everything in a buffet, we can, if that's logical, it's not my decision, it's someone else's. But I look at it, I think how many dishes can you provide and then what happens in middle school when it all of a sudden is different expectations? And I think the step that was taken this year dividing it into language A, B, and C was more realistic because some people go through five years skipping between, and if you have schools, you have a different language or you come in and go, so everybody doesn't have the same level even if they've had five elementary years when they get to middle school. So I think that takes some of the pressure off, you know, and it's a little more equitable to sample something different also. But it still leaves a language teacher trying to balance all these different levels coming into one class and then what happens to the scope and sequence? If someone's taken something since kindergarten, do they continue with? I mean, that's something we don't know yet as it's just happening.
Is that the case with musical too?
Yeah, and there is a dropout level, you know, so it's one of those things you look at. So it's very complex, but we offer a wonderful bunch of samples. And for my own kids, I wanted to try everything I could make them try, just because it's much easier when you're younger to try something, but then you've got to pull it together. So good job.
Further questions, comments? Okay, thank you very much.
All right, I believe that if we can move on to our next discussion item, which is discussion on the 2019-2020 calendar.
Yes. Well, hi. So we've had a chance to have some good discussion around the calendar. Again, I just want to celebrate together that we are approving, we're on track to approve the 2019-20 calendar much earlier than we have in the past, so that's something to be celebrated. The one piece that I had mentioned at the last board meeting was that we were going to look into how we could make some small adjustments so that we could have a non-student contact day on election day. And Mr. Maurer had shared that some other districts had taken that approach and we just wanted to do some looking into that. And so you'll see on this new draft calendar, that is the one additional change that we did make was that we shifted, we had a professional development day scheduled for Friday that week, so we moved the professional development day to Tuesday, which was, which is election day, and then students will then be in class and the end of the quarter will be on Friday. Mr. Maurer did some very good collaboration across districts for those that are, again, most districts are in the process of drafting their calendar, we're ahead of pace, but those districts that have implemented that, they said that they were really satisfied with the decision and then other districts that were looking at just working with the county to move the election location away from the schools. But if you want to hear anything further, Mr. Maurer, I'm sure would be happy to share some additional context.
I can just, I've got a cold, so I don't know if you'll be passing the mic, but I'll use my own set of voices. So off the metro, the district that I emailed out, 22 responded back to the email, which was a pretty good turnout. Sixteen of those are either changing or have changed or in the process of reviewing and change to make it a non-student day out of 22. The six that aren't moving, two currently dead, buildings that are used that don't have students in them. And those other four, two of them are just based on construction over years past, have setups where the public go right into gyms and ride out, get any daxes in the other part of the school. So it's a, we're on the same page that every other, the majority of the districts are basically on the same, similar conversations. And I also have a meeting set up in mid-December with myself and John Anderson and Kevin Krieger to meet with Ramsey County, just to propose that for the future.
Comments, questions? Self.
I think this presents a really great opportunity for more discussion of the district about civic life and civic engagement and what this means, what our responsibilities are, but then also students' responsibilities are. No, I, my hope is always when we have holidays like Mother's Day or President's Day that we are able to take those opportunities to talk about the reasons for those holidays. And so I believe that this is another opportunity for us, for our students in senior high access, election judges, and to just amplify the fact that we find that important as well. It's not just college, it's also civic.
Speaking of, a couple of the people that did email me back did say that they didn't see a lot more students with their parents around to get going to, so I did see that they kind of touched on the same point.
Do you have something to say?
I know I kind of comment on this each time, but you know, the districts that are like, where they've changed it, so we just go into the gym and leave and still have the students there, they're still taking some of the teaching space that they did. And I think I'm glad that we're doing a non-student day and being considerate of our physical education staff that, who's with teaching space, we need to get in space at schools that don't have access to it. So, this is the last time I'll say that.
And it's appreciated and noted. Thank you.
Piggybacking on her, I love what they did at North Campus this year, I don't know if it was the first time that they had held their own election so that kids could see what the process is for years. That's the first time I'd heard of it, but I thought that was, I thought that was a very, some kids have to actually see the processes, they can actually turn eight to, it's not something that's scary.
Other questions, comments?
Just a comment, kudos to Ms. Sarah for being able to put us in a position to wrap up the calendar so quickly and efficiently. A school calendar, you know, at our point, how hard can that be? Yeah, it's not rocket science. Or is it? You know, there are, you know, a new number of items that need to be orchestrated, you know, placed and everything like that and we need to achieve the balance of, we need to do the kinds of contracts and everything, so.
Thanks goes to more people than me and one of those people will be coming up here in just a minute, so I just want to thank the many, many people, there's a calendar committee, but Brian Morris put in a lot of extra work on this because the days were not adding up and he put in a lot of extra time to make sure that we were meeting all the requirements and that we weren't overlooking something that would be obvious once you catch it and it's approved, so I just want to make sure to credit him for the extra work that he put in.
Mr. Jav?
Yeah, Sarah, I just want to confirm and looking at the calendar draft, it looks like there are no parent-teacher conferences scheduled during the day, is that correct?
Correct.
I was just wondering how that went this year as far as having the, at least the high schools, I don't have the Tuesday during the day sessions, what kind of feedback you can give me back from that?
The biggest part of this is that there were trade-offs that we had to make. If we were going to put in days like the teacher workdays, we had to be really thoughtful about coming up with a way that we could use those to support teachers that wanted to take advantage of using those before school started. We had to do the same with conferences because otherwise we would be going into that whole second week in June and those are not the most productive learning days. And so that was our guide, was to really look at how do we maximize the days that are going to benefit the students the most and then have to make trade-offs on the teacher workdays and conference times. And we had really good teacher participation in our calendar committee to put those where they made sense for elementary and where they made sense for secondary. So you'll see that those are at different times, which we think is going to help us with the many parents that have children in the districts that are teaching as well so that they can have more opportunities to attend conferences at the level that their children are attending school.
But there are evenings scheduled next year, do they?
Not during the day, they're all evening times.
I know people have a chance to check everything online if they have a computer at home, but again, I always think about the equity thing, so your second shift person will never be able to have a teacher conference.
During the scheduled time, no, but we do have, our teachers are amazing and they accommodate right now, if a parent can't make it on a day that conferences are scheduled, they do accommodate that. But yes, it's going to require working with their administrator to make sure that they're able to meet that and accommodate the family's needs.
I know people are second shift workers.
Yep.
Two households, so they would never be able to make normal conferences.
And we do, you know, there's ways that we just need to make sure that we're accommodating, whether it's for a conference or whether something comes up and a parent just has a question that they need to process with a teacher, that is just something our teachers do very well, but I think in light of the fact that there are not any daytime conference hours, that's something that we're going to have to make sure is at the top of everyone's radar.
So I noticed that there's, we don't get the Monday and Tuesday, it makes me very good understanding that we have two weeks for Christmas, but is there a concern that those might not be productive days for students being in school because it's so close to the break and a lot of teachers will want to do lesson plans in those days, it's considered a risk. It seems a lot more than that.
We sweat that question all the time, all the time. And when we looked at if we came on those two days and then you can't, then what about the day after January 1st? Do we come back for two days after January 1st to conclude that week? So there wasn't, there wasn't a perfect answer to not have a short week like that, but I'm very confident that our teachers are going to plan and have two productive days before break, but those are glaring parts that are hard to like make draft into final, but it was the best that we could do in light of all of the parts we were trying to balance.
Other comments, questions, concerns? So my understanding is we'll come back in December for approval?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now we'll move on to our next discussion, I am achievement and integration discussion.
All right. Why doesn't everybody come on up and I will let them know the plan? So Brian Morris is going to be briefly sharing an overview of the data that you received in your packet and some of the data we've already talked about when we did our world's best workforce presentation, you guys can all come over here. So what we decided to do was we're going to do a brief data presentation and then we're going to give you some context to the story behind the data. And so these are each of our cultural liaisons and dream team, this is an amazing team and they're just going to share some of the work they've been doing this year that can add some personal stories of families and students and how their work is connected to getting us to these outcomes that we're after through the funding we received through achievement and integration. We, I know we like to sometimes ask questions after, but I just want to make sure that, you know, I'm kind of going to be a little time keeper role because I want to make sure you hear from everybody. We can do it one of two ways, we can present all the way down and that'll be about, we've planned it to be about 11 and a half minutes and then that gives us plenty of time for questions after and that way everybody gets a chance to kind of share. Or if you want to do questions along the way, that's fine, but then I would have to step into that time keeper role to make sure that we don't run out of time.
I think it would be better if we just let you go through the presentation and we'll have questions at the end.
Okay. Perfect. All right, sounds good. Brian? Oh, and I'm going to just do some quick introductions even though, but this is of course Brian, Nirvana, Brianna, and Michael and Jordan. And Jordan's going to swing over this way so that she's.
Plan that.
There you go. Here, you can go here. Dream team, yeah, you got it.
Thank you. Excuse me. Chairman and members of the board, Dr. Kazmercheck, the purpose of the achievement and integration for Minnesota program is to pursue racial and economic integration, increase student achievement, create equitable educational opportunities and reduce economic disparities based on students' diverse racial, ethnic, and economic backgrounds. Tonight, we're going to provide an update of our achievement and integration goals and data and more importantly, provide faces and context to the work that we do in support of our goals. So following my overview, Jordan, Michael, Nirvana, and Brianna will provide a snapshot of the important work that they're doing in support of our students and our families and then after that we'll take questions. You'll see or you will have read that our achievement and integration goals are similar to our world's best workforce goals, but with a deeper focus on equity. Our first achievement and integration goal is to increase our four-year graduation rate to 96% by the year 2020. As I had reported before, our 2017 rate was 88.7%. We're working to improve our students' graduation rate by addressing chronic absenteeism, providing behavior supports to increase classroom engagement, and working to improve student grade performance in the classroom. Our second achievement and integration goal is to decrease our achievement gaps in reading and math by 15 percentage points. Our gaps based on MCA proficiency currently range from 3 to 28 percentage points in reading and 14 to 31 percentage points in math. The actions that we're taking include professional development and avid instructional practices, instructional response to student data, targeted student support in a focus on number sense and early literacy. Our third goal is to increase the number of students from underserved groups who are college and career ready. We have had increases in the percentage of all high school students participating and made great strides towards reaching equitable participation in college and career focused classes. Our actions include identifying and supporting students, professional development and instruction for college and career readiness, and improved communications with. communication with parents and other stakeholders. Finally, our goal for our racially identifiable school at Willow Elementary is to increase reading proficiency from 52% to almost 71%, and we had strong increases in grade-level reading proficiency in Willow in the past year. Those strong increases were in response to work on, with student behavior, engagement through STEM programming, and professional development in literacy instruction. Like I said, the important work is the faces and the actions that our teachers and our liaisons are doing with our students and our families. And I'm going to pass the mic to Jordan, who's going to start us off to let us know what she's got going on.
Bonjour all, and thank you so much for your time this evening. As mentioned, I am Jordan Zickerman. I am the Native American Cultural Liaison and Indian Ed Program Lead, and I just wanted to highlight an upcoming event that highlights work being done to not only increase student engagement within school, but within the larger community. So I facilitate a student group at South Campus right now called Just Us, as I have mentioned before, to this group, and it is a discussion platform focused on diversity, equity, and inclusion. Following a very successful IZI event that was held in the fall at Willow Lane, which some of you attended, thank you very much, the students in the student group at Just Us thought it would be great to host a student-led and student-facilitated IZI event, meaning intentional social interaction, that will be open to all North-South and ALC students, families, and community members. And again, this is entirely run and facilitated by our students, and I want to highlight that it is not just from the Just Us student group, but instead, the students have decided to open up and collaborate with all of the liaison student groups. So we will have student leaders from each of our student groups, which will be a very diverse representation, and increase overall engagement, not only from our student side of things, but parent side of things and community side of things. And again, we'll have questions at the end if you need. So I think it's, Michael, thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Michael Jett, and I am the African-American Cultural Liaison for the district. One of my highlights from this fall is having my African-American parent advisory meeting, just an introduction of myself, and having them face-to-face to ask any questions or any concerns they might have. The support from Dr. Kay and Sarah was awesome. I was able to get quite a few parents to be a part of a field trip that I planned for our students that was brought up by the Black Girl Magic. We went on HBCU College Fair informational little tour over at Woodbury High, and I was able to have two parents meet me there and one parent ride the bus with me, which was pretty awesome. So, I mean, the kids loved it, and I don't think we stayed long enough, because when I said it was time to go, they wanted more information, so. And for everyone that doesn't know what HBCU means, it's Historically Black Colleges and Universities. What's awesome about that is a lot of kids struggle to pay application fees to keep applying for college after college after college. HBCU allows you to have one application, up to 50 colleges you can apply for out of the 101 schools that are considered an HBCU. So kids were able to get tons of information. There was 36 colleges that was there. They put on a presentation, and then they did a little fair, college fair on the outside, which was really cool, and the kids loved it.
My name is Nirvana Yang, and I'm the Mong and Asian-American Cultural Liaison. So my role is to connect with family that needs additional support, as well create programs and clubs such as Culture Club to make students feel more welcome at their school. And I preach this a lot, but my overall goal is to make students feel like the school is theirs and not just a school that they go to. And so prior to this position, I worked at Mong College Prep Academy. It's a school that's designed and caters to the Mong community. And, sorry, lost my thought. And so to kind of give back to the Mong community, before the holiday break, before the holiday break was actually the Mong New Year. So I invited all the principals to wish their students a happy Mong New Year over the morning announcement. It sounds like it's something so simple, but coming from students, especially Mong students from the principal and in the morning announcement, not just to wish them, but to announce it to the whole school. It's a small step, but I think it's going towards the direct direction. And I also spent a day at Hugo Elementary, fully dressed in traditional Mong clothing, teaching kindergarten, first grader, why we celebrate the Mong New Year, did an activity that we do at the Mong New Year, which is Baal Tass, getting to know. So the students get to see a visual representation of the Mong New Year. They get to participate in an activity. And I wish I could have brought the treat that we would eat them on New Year, but again, like I said, it's one small step at a time.
Hola, I'm Brianna Santos Coe. I'm the Cultural Liaison with Latino Students and Families here in White River Lake. So what I've come here to share tonight is something that I'm super excited about, and I'm collaborating with a whole bunch of people on, which is my favorite thing to do. So I've been doing different types of Latino mentorship programs for almost the last decade, four with specific programs in Minneapolis Public School, and this is my second here, here in White River Lake. And one, we focus on things like critical thinking, leadership, positive self-expression. Here in White River Lake, I have groups that range from elementary up to high school. And one of the activities that we regularly engage in is I'll bring like someone amazing, some Latino person that did something incredible in our community. And it's always saddened me that most of the students have no knowledge at all of our own history. Most of the girls in the Latinas Unidas groups that I have at North and South didn't even know who Cesar Chavez was, and that's like our paragraph. That's all we got. So, I'm just saying. So I'm also, I have to say, I'm so excited that Jen Babish is here because she's just got so much energy, and she seems like one of those people who loves to collaborate with others as well. So I was talking with her about, you know, talking about ethnic studies, and that's something that we did in Minneapolis Public Schools, is they adopted a Latino-Chicano History Ethnic Studies Program and an African-American History Ethnic Studies Program. And I think that they're working on, or have maybe adopted since I left, Mong-American History. Anyway, so on December 20th, we're going to be doing a, I'm going to be facilitating a PD for students and staff. So Latino students in the morning from ALC North and South will be participating in a session, and staff from 1:00 to 4:00 in the afternoon from ALC North and South will be participating in a staff-focused session. And it's called U.S. History Through a Latino-Chicano Lens. And the goal for students really is to inspire them, and you're all invited as well. It's going to be, I think it's going to be just amazing, and I'm really, really excited about it, if you can't tell. The goal for students that I have is really is that they get inspired, that they see that they're not just standing on their family's shoulders, but they're standing on the shoulders of so many people before them in their community that have contributed so much to this country. And the goal that I have for educators is that they also get inspired, but that they go, that they leave with some concrete ideas as to how they can implement and integrate some of what they've learned into their curriculum that they have currently. So the person who's going to be leading these sessions with me is Mr. Clever Ortiz, and I worked with him in MPS for a number of years, and I went with him on the first, with the first cohort of Latino students on the Social Justice Tour out to California on a bus that broke down like five times in the desert. This is very exciting. It was, but it was amazing. It was a great learning experience for both of us and the students, and he has a ton of experience working with educators. He's working at MCTC now in the Teacher Training Program. He's running that, and he worked extensively with the U of M on the ethnic studies curriculums that have been adopted in several districts. So I'm really excited about it, and I hope to see some of you there. And I think I'm the last one.
Well, before we open it up for questions, I just want to make sure to formally introduce Nirvana Yang. Nirvana is, just joined us, obviously, just started here, and I think one of the statements that he said is he's passionate about students feeling like the school is their school. And just, it's exciting just for him to just love his culture, and he was, it was very, very hard to get him to actually come here because he was being pulled from where he currently was. They did not want to lose him. They fought hard for him, and I just, he was willing to take that leap of faith because he just really believes that having, living in a community or being part of a community that really values and sees diversity as an asset, and how students can really embrace their culture and actually be positioned for success. He is just an amazing person, and we're so lucky to have him. And I just want to say that about all of these folks. And I'm just going to share this right now because they are such an example of the direction we're moving in if we're going to really deliver on our new strategic context. And so this is a quote from Brene Brown. "The level of collective courage in an organization is the absolute best predictor of the organization's ability to be successful in terms of its culture to develop leaders and to meet its mission." And they are courageous leaders, and every idea that they shared was an idea that they brought forward through collaboration with their colleagues. It was not something that they were asked to do. They had courage, and they took the initiative, and they're making a big impact. So with that, if you have any questions?
Questions?
Thank you very much. I have a couple of questions for each of you, actually. So, Michael, we were talking about the HBCUs. Are there any that are local?
No, no local HBCUs. The closest one would be in Ohio.
Okay. Are they mostly coastal or southern?
It's more southern, more southern. Ohio's going to be the closest you get to the Midwest. Other than that, everything is down south, east coast.
Okay. But I love that idea of kids being able to submit one application. That is genius. So, thank you. Good. Jordan?
Yes.
For you, the IZI event, what is that?
Yes. I have flyers for each of you, but it'll be on next Saturday, December 8th, at 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at North Campus in the lunchroom. And again, I do have flyers, and Marissa and Ari in Communications have been so awesome in helping pushing those out in the e-newsletters and the digital backpacks, and all of us doing robo-calls and whatnot. So it should be a good turnout. We're really excited.
And is this something that, if it's successful, you might do again?
Yes. I think this is being done in result to a very successful one that took place in the fall. That was my first ever IZI that I've ever attended or, and/or facilitated, and it was absolutely amazing. The entire community even stayed to help pick up all the tables and chairs. That's how I knew it was a great event. So we have been exploring some options, a student-led IZI, and I've also been talking to Robert Anderson about doing some mini IZIs between students and teachers in the mornings, maybe just coffee and donuts, to have many intentional social interactions. So we're talking about different methods to continue these interactions.
You're good.
You're good.
Brianna, I know Clever, and...
Oh, you do? Yeah, he's awesome.
First time that you've done a program like this, history through the...
Through Latino-Chicano Lens. I mean, I do that in a microscopic fashion with my mentorship group students, but we've not, I don't think probably that's ever happened, that it's happened in White River Lake, where there's been a...
The last four and a half years that I know, I mean, before that, there may have been, but I suppose it's been two years.
So I, not here, no. We, I did some of that in Minneapolis, but...
And where will that be placed?
So that's going to be at South. Yep, and students will be in the, I think both are going to be in the auditorium at South. Yep, morning and afternoon.
You're welcome to attend.
Yeah. Yeah, for sure. Allison Gillespie from North was like, I'm going all day for the student part and the afternoon part. So you are welcome to attend for as long as you can that day. Yeah, it's going to be good, I think.
And Nirvana, I just wanted to say that you mentioned, the principal mentioning Mong New Year over the loudspeaker. I think that really opened my eyes a little bit of, you know, what steps we can all be taking to make students feel welcome. And so I guess my question for you is, how did the students respond to that?
So at the time, I was driving towards Hugo to present, but I haven't got a chance to ask the student yet in my Culture Club group, but I'm sure they would be very surprised. And even a few of them, the principals both took an extra step and actually said it in Mong, so I know that made a big, a really big impact, because, you know, just going to the elementary, you don't see a lot of the culture arts or anything in display. And so even when I go to the classroom and say, oh, I'm the Culture Liaison, and especially a male Culture Liaison, they're so surprised that there's somebody there that can speak the language as well. And to have the principals say it in the morning announcement, it's, I'm sure it makes a big impact.
And then I have one more question, I guess, for all of you. Do you meet on a regular basis as a group?
We try to. Our schedule is super busy, but yeah.
Sometimes it miraculously happens that we're all in the office at the same time.
That's awesome. It doesn't happen very frequently, but maybe once a week?
I'm just...
Well, they're so, they're like accidental, sort of. They're not really set up times, but we could set up times to meet with all of you and any of you.
This is really exciting work, and so I'm just really...
We should do that.
Learn more about what you're all doing in, you know, a couple of minutes, get kind of a highlight reel, but I think it would be really valuable to learn more about how you're working through all the different levels of community engagement, so.
Two things. We could just create a spreadsheet that gives like an update that could be sent out. We do that at our check-in meetings, so we could just do that and share that out if people are just wanting to kind of see all that's going on. Might be the inefficient way to just feel the energy.
I think that, I know all you're doing with so many groups, but I love the fact that there's several things we can attend if we just have the information to show up at the right place at the right time. And I know that the Many Faces was great the other night, and the conversations at Willow earlier in the fall. All of those things are great, and any of them that we can go to, you just get a good sense of the community. It's a whole lot wider and closer. I hate to make another meeting, but information, because we've got exciting things going on.
One other thing, Principal Strife is still here, and I know that going back to the data piece and a leader that leads by example, by seeing the students behind the data, I didn't know if you also wanted to make sure if there's any questions you have for her. She is here as well.
Other questions, comments?
I just wanted to say that it's really nice to see you guys like working to open the eyes of everybody in the schools. I don't think there's enough of it going around, really aware of the cultures, ethnicities around them. It's such a big part in our society right now. It's really cool to see that happening.
Mine was kind of a general, I think it might be, a lot of the, we keep talking about behavior supports. What specifically behavior supports, what does that mean? What does that look like? Like examples, behavior supports, sort of in place for students?
Well, for this year, a lot, we've changed a lot this year. In the first six weeks of school, we, our referrals were down 60%. And I was just trying to pull data over here. I don't know yet. I'm going to need some help pulling some data, but I know that our, all of our discipline, our suspensions in school, out of school, everything is way down. And we contribute that to restorative dialogue that they're also using at Sunrise, and that when kids, and I've even done restorative dialogue between a student and a teacher, and even between teachers when need be, but it's about really talking things through and working things out with kids and not discipline, and then we move on when the problem still exists. It's really time-consuming, but it's the right thing to do. We see really strong changes in the whole... strong changes in the whole atmosphere of the building because of it. So, that would be one support. We have Mr. Johnson. He is a behavior specialist. Well, we used to call him that. Now, we call him our student success coach because everything he does is on the positive side. So, it's proactive and we do everything we can to be proactive. And he does student groups and social groups and sports. He and Mr. Tim Daniels also have had a basketball team and a football team for the last several years. This year, they have two basketball teams, a girls' and a boys'. They run them, I think through Community Ed. That changes the culture. When they feel like there are people that want to be with them, they're building relationships with them. We use positive behavior intervention, so they hand out POS tickets. Our goal is always 10,000 a year that we tell the kids when they're doing the right thing. So, I would say it's a whole lot of things coming together and each year building on what we have from the prior year. And the kids now in fifth grade were there when we started PBIS in, they were in first grade. So, I think for them, it's just the norm. So, that's just some examples of some of the supports. And then the Alive program.
What program?
It's Alive. It's trauma-sensitive programming. So, we have a grant for that for three years. We're in our second year. And we have Alive counselors that teach lessons in every classroom and there's research behind it. And I just think that helps release, relieve stress in kids. It gives them the opportunity to talk about things that they are worried about and then they don't act out in other ways.
My other question is kind of for all of you. Have you found new and different ways? I know overall just getting parent, all parents to engage sometimes can be a bit difficult. Have you found new and interesting ways to, to get more parents to engage with the school and with you, with your particular groups? Have you found one that works?
What I've, what I've found, and half of the emails didn't work, that I had on, on my list, but a lot of parents responded back through email. I didn't even get a chance to send out a robo-call. And then we put it out in all the newsletters. And parents, I mean, they want to hear from us. Once you make connections with them, it's kind of like you're exchanging numbers. They just call you for just any support that you possibly can, can give them. And I just think it's, the open door policy is, "Just call me when you need me." That, that, that helps a lot of parents out, all the way across the board, I think.
The impact of these folks at Willow Lane being a very diverse school has been amazing this year. Even running the Izzy was amazing. Building relationships with our families, hosting student groups, being in our buildings, getting to know our kids and talking with the parents and just being a part of our team, our staff and our kids and our families. So, it's been really great working with, the, the way they work together has been amazing.
For the Indian Education Program, I mean, the program is still young. So, I think a big part that increased in overall engagement, not only from our parents, but also from our students, is increased awareness. And that came through many different methods. We came out with our first brochure. We got a landing site on the webpage. We sent out Native Times newsletters quarterly to inform about upcoming events that we have. Now, we have an Indian Education Program calendar on our website that highlights every event that we have going on for the entire year. So, that is the media push and the communications push that really increased overall awareness and engagement. But then, like Michael said, I, once the parents have your number, it's, they'll use it on speeds out frequently. I mean, it's really, it comes down to the relationship building aspect of that. But for the Indian Education Program in general, I'd say a lot of it had to do with our media support. I'd also say in regards to the Just Us Student Group, what I've found is when our students feel really uplifted to use their own voices, their parents do the same. Really, a lot of these students have stepped up and beyond and have attended like the Urban Leadership Academy. And their parents therefore feel so much more uplifted to use their voices as well. So, that's kind of a collaborative dynamic there.
Oh, okay, sure. I think, you know, I think, like, I have to agree. I think like the most fundamental piece is like, for me anyway, is that trust piece. Like that parents know that I have the best interests of their child at heart and that, you know, if they have a question, I'm going to find an answer, even if Pat's talked to 900 people, which sometimes is the case. But I think for district-wide events, I think, you know, for Latino families anyway, the more pertinent an event is for, to their child, if they can see their child in this event, if they can see like a direct impact or benefit for their child, they're going to be a lot more likely to take their time and attend, you know?
Yeah. And I was going to add that we all serve very different communities. So, for my, the Mung community, not a lot of the, not a lot of the Mung parents know how to use the resource that they have. They can't read and write in Mung. They can't read English. They have this sense of pride of feeling, attending an event that they're not very, that they don't know much of because they don't want to feel stupid or, yeah, ill, uneducated. So, my, in my community, it's, it's a lot of personal phone calls, home visits, and actually gaining that trust from families. Because Malia, the previous culture, Mung culture liaison, she had built this strong relationship with multiple families. And now that I'm taking over and just with the conference that I've been to translating for these parents, they don't, they don't feel like they trust me. And you can get that, you can get that sense. And just to kind of break that wall down saying, "I am the new culture liaison." And I know my age play a lot in it too. I'm, I'm very young and a lot of the parents feel like I can't provide what they need. But just to constantly knocking at the door, "Hey, I'm here. Here's, here's the resource for you. I'm here for you." And so, yeah. So, we, all of us serve very different communities and reaching out to them is very different as well.
Just one more thing to go off of everything that we've just said. And going back to the Izzy event at Willow, that was a really eye-opening event for me and I hope for others as well because it was by far the most diverse event I've attended in White Bear Lake. And I think that is because of what Nirvana just said, is we each strategically outreach to our parents, families and students in ways that we know that they would, they would get it and they would understand and they would feel included and welcomed as soon as they came in. And that was at every single level. We had pairs and teachers and admin and each of us reaching out in different methods in order to ensure that the message got out to all. And I think that really highlights parent engagement at its core is many methods to ensure all can receive. Yeah.
And that's, I was going to mention the Izzy. I'd like to thank Chris for jumping. The very first one was held at Willow.
Yes.
It was like, okay, let's just do this and highlight the fact that I'm there. Just, I don't have to wear my school board tan. And at the last one, you know, a parent sat down, was having a meal with a parent and he was asking me, "What opportunities are big for my children?" And it was fantastic that I introduced myself to Michael at conversation because I went, "Let me introduce you to our African-American cultural liaison." And then they had a great conversation and the discussion started about an African-American parent advisory group. And those are the kind of things, like with the diverse groups that are there and everyone's there enjoying the meal, but having intentional conversations. Those are the really, really valuable experiences, in my opinion. And looking at the different liaisons on that, making connections with the families is just so important.
I said one more question. Do you four have literature lists that you share with teachers at multiple levels about ways they can integrate different types of literature into their curriculum?
Well, I don't know. I know that I don't necessarily have like literature lists that would help teachers in the integration of that, those pieces. But, which is one, like the PD on the 20th is really, in my mind, at least like one step in the right direction for that. But I know that the libraries of North and South Campus are sort of rebooting their, because now that Lindsay Lamours is there, it's all going to be just, she has to redo the whole thing. And so, I've, I have a whole list of Latino-Chicano literature that can be used by a lot of different teachers as part of their curriculum and that they were, that they're going to look at getting for their school libraries. And I know you have-
Yeah. So, at the end of last year, the Indian Education Program, we purchased about 50 different books, all written by Indigenous authors for all different grade levels. And I am currently doing student book clubs, Native book clubs for sixth through 12th grade. And I'm working with some of the media specialists because a lot of the students too just want to have access to these books and don't necessarily want to spend every bear's time in a Native book club. And bear's time is all about student choice and student agency. So, we have to honor that. But this list, what I've done is I have curated a list of every single book that we have, a description of it and a picture of it. And I've shared it with our Native students and with our media specialists. And the media specialist, this is new to me. I've never done a book club, but we had to do it with just Native students because only Native students can access the books that were purchased with Indian Ed funds. So, it's been kind of wonky trying to figure out how the best and most effective way to share these resources with our students are. But through sharing this list with our media specialists, Nancy, just the other day, was like, "Hey, we just got this book in, Dreaming in Indian. Do you guys happen to have it on your list? Because we're thinking about adding it into curriculum at North." I'm like, "Yes, we do have that on our list." So, it's sharing resources out to let them know that this is valuable and authentic literature that you can include, even though I can't necessarily hand over our 12 copies. But they are available to all of our Native students K through 12. And we're still trying to figure out an effective way for our kindergarten through fifth grade students because it's just hard for me to run that many book clubs. But it's a start.
Other questions, comments? Mr. Japp?
Yeah, mine has to do, question going back to the actual goals here and stated. These are awesome goals. I mean, and I hope that we can not only meet them, but surpass them. That being said, I just, I'm not sure how the goals were arrived at. And I just want to make sure that, want to get a feel as far as comfort level in terms of the realistic aspect of these. Because, for example, Willow increasing reading proficiency from just under 32% to almost 71%. I, I want to make sure that we're not, we're stretching, but not stretching too far because you folks and the educators involved are going to have to, you know, work toward these goals. And want to make sure that, you know, people aren't getting stretched too much all at once rather than more in any of those, so.
Yeah, just, excuse me. The goals were set last spring with the, with the new Achievement and Integration Plan. And you're right. I mean, I think, I think setting stretch goals are more important than, you know, narrowing down to what is a manageable goal. Like, a manageable goal is not something to, to necessarily strive for. But, you know, when you think about, well, first off, when you think about Willow's goal, I mean, they had, they had from 17 to 18, five percentage point increase at the elementary level. They had huge, like fifth, their, excuse me, grade five cohort. And I didn't go into necessarily all this level of detail, but their grade five cohort from fourth to fifth grade, a 15 percentage point increase. And that's huge. And, and, and I think part of seeing big change is to set big goals and the journey that takes place on the way, way to those goals. I mean, if, if, our graduation rate goal is also a very high goal as well. And it's, it's one that I think is, is definitely worth striving for and, and, you know, and setting in the first place. Do you have?
What you're saying is really important. And we talk about this a lot at Willow. We know we have to accelerate our kids. We have to. And they can do it. So, we really try, I try not to have them focus on that because it can be overwhelming, but focus on they're good teachers. What can we do systemically to change what we're doing so that we can better accelerate our kids? So, this year, we started something called Win Time. So, we have a half an hour every single day where instead of three teachers per grade level, we use the three teachers to split kids, but we also use intervention teachers, paraprofessionals, EL, special ed. And now, we stretch from three groups of leveled kids to 10 groups, with the smallest groups being the kids that need the most support and the larger groups being more enrichment to accelerate the kids. It's messy work. We visited Carver, Carver Elementary School and they were seeing great gains, very similar demographics. And this is what we learned from them. We continue to partner with them. They have come to visit us at Willow to learn about PBIS and we go to visit them or call them with questions. I think we can do it. And I try to have the teachers not focus on that, do our good, hard work every day. There is no magic bullet. It's hard, hard work. And I think systemic changes will bring that kind of growth.
Because one of the things that, you know, I always like to see is movement progress and as much progress as we can make without, and I've said it before, stretching people to point, breaking, you know, in the process. Because then in the end, what have we really accomplished? And so many organizations in the private sector do that. I mean, where it's unreasonable expectations and people are pushed and pushed and pushed. And in the end, if you don't meet those goals, then it can be demoralizing, quite frankly, and it can, it can backfire. And so, I'm just wanting to hear what you have to say. And it sounds good to me, so.
The one piece I'll add, we did, we did have a year where we had some frustrating, we, we didn't meet the goals we were after at Willow. And what Chris did was she broke it down to growth to proficiency and also showed the students that were really far behind how they had made growth to get to proficiency. Because you cannot expect a student that's two grades behind to make up, you know, two years of growth in one year, but a year and a half, or, you know, that, that's pretty significant. And so, she, she does a good job of making sure that, yes, we didn't meet our goal and our kids are capable and we need to keep making the adjustments we need to make to have a system that best meets their needs. But look at the growth we made to get to the outcomes and they're accelerating and making sure that they hear that as well.
Other questions, comments?
I was glad to hear about all the exciting reading lists and books. And what you have on this, best person to share it with, is your media specialist who has a budget and can add those. I did that for 30 years at North. I know there's a good cultural collection there and always can use a boost. I know we have a long resource center there. It's been moving. I'm not sure where it went, but there's a big sturdy cloth. And, you know, I think we've all tried to build places that make kids feel like it's welcoming and you can easily find a classroom set of the surveyor or whatever you're looking for usually. So, I think media people are always eager to support that and excited to do it and have kids at after-school or before-school do a book club. Probably the informal and the medium. So, that's cool.
Other comments, questions? For me, I want to thank you all for your work. I mean, it's amazing stuff. And thank you all for the work you do. So, with that, thank you very much. We will move into our last discussion item before the big salute.
Good evening. Thanks a lot. Good evening. Uh, thanks a lot. Um, the Big Sleuth's a really fun thing to talk about and, um, and I wanna just show you kind of a little bit of background about it and then tell you where we're at, uh, with it right now and kind of what are our next steps. We introduced the Big Sleuth, uh, at, um, at Convocation. And when we talked about it to our entire staff there, what we said is, you know, if you'd look into the strategic plan, you can find exactly where in the strategic plan the facilities work is in that. It's written right in there. The Big Sleuth, uh, really came out of the concept of the strategic plan of like, wow, we involve 200 voices in decision-making here? What if we involve 200 more? What if we involve 500 more? What might that look like? And, um, and helping staff understand that they can help us to continue to shape our strategic direction as a district is really, really empowering and, uh, and a really, I think, uh, exciting cultural shift for us as a district. Uh, the software and kind of the program that, um, powers the Big Sleuth, uh, was actually invented by and is maintained and managed by, um, United Healthcare. And, uh, they basically give it away to districts for a really, really nominal cost. And, um, and there's a collaborative of about a dozen districts in the greater Twin Cities area and then about 50 districts nationwide that are using this platform. And one of the most exciting things for me about this work has been, um, being able to collaborate with all these other schools because there's very much this shared, um, excitement around, wow, if your school comes up with a great idea, I wanna hear about it so we can, but it was, we can make it happen here. And so people have really been, uh, very willing to share ideas. And I think that, um, the fact that all these other schools that have done this before us have been so willing to share what were their successes and failures, um, helped us have a really successful event right in our first year. Um, and, and that gave us a real leg up on other districts that have started and just haven't, haven't had as many other districts to draw from. Our goals are really twofold here. Uh, first of all, to authentically engage more voices in decision-making, I already talked about that. And then to provide this structure, uh, that United Healthcare built, uh, to really elevate those ideas to a strategic level. So we're not just going around doing listening sessions and talking to people, but we're actually saying, "Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna elevate this idea up to, uh, up to a strategic, uh, level." We had a lot of communication around the Big Sleuth with this, uh, goal of making sure that all staff, not just our teaching staff, but all of our contracted staff felt really involved. So we had a little teaser campaign this summer with a website and a really simple postcard. We talked about it at Convocation, as I mentioned. We went around and met at, um, at nearly every building and with nearly every department, uh, to talk about, uh, what, what the Big Sleuth was and how staff could get involved. And then we emailed people throughout the process, some targeted emails, um, at key moments throughout the Big Sleuth. Uh, here's the website that we built. And, um, from October 1st to October 17th, uh, we allowed people just to submit ideas. So, uh, we was very open-ended. How might you make White Bear Lake a better school district? How might you improve, uh, White Bear for students? And, um, and so we opened this up for, uh, for a couple of weeks for people to submit ideas. The form that they use is really simple form. Uh, they're really focused on what is the problem you're trying to solve? Uh, and then, uh, we asked also, you know, what's your solution? How might, how, how do you propose we solve this? And then how does it relate to our current strategic plan? And, uh, three kind of big themes emerged from the ideas that got submitted. There was, um, a fair number on learning spaces, which was a real affirmation of the work that Tim's leading around facilities work. Uh, that was really nice to see. Some things around social emotional health, which, um, I know you've all been very aware of and are really tuned into. Uh, that was really important. And then opportunities for students too, which we've heard a lot about tonight and, um, and that staff feel really passionately about. So it's fun to see those happen. Uh, then we also asked people just to estimate, um, kind of from a financial perspective, is this a big, medium or small idea? And that's how we split them up. 143 ideas were submitted by staff. We, uh, we were initially just out of the gate, just to give you a little perspective here, hoping for, um, 25 or more ideas. That was kind of our target. So we were, we were like absolutely overwhelmed. When we got to like 42 ideas, I was like, oh my gosh, like we might hit 50 ideas as a district, that'd be incredible. Uh, then when we hit 80 some, I was like, huh, we might hit 100. And, um, and it's really, I think, a, a remarkable, um, affirmation of staff's creativity in this district, but also their trust in, in the fact that, okay, my ideas are gonna be heard here. And that's, uh, that's really, really, uh, fun to see. Um, and a huge variety of ideas, as I mentioned, from, um, really across the board. But one of the fun things about, once these ideas got posted, other staff could go in and weigh in on them and say, "Hey, have you thought about this? Like, um, let me, let me work with you on this. Uh, here's another solution I have," or just, "I love this idea and I'd love to see it move forward." Uh, then from October 5th to the 17th, uh, we had our voting process happen. And the way the voting works, um, was you'd be presented with two ideas and it would say, "Which of these do you think will have a bigger impact on White Bear Lake area schools?" And you would just, you pick one and then it'd give you another pair. And you could do that as many times as you want. With 143 ideas, uh, there were 10,000 possible idea pairings to pair every single one of those ideas against every other ideas. And, um, I will tell you, we had a couple of staff that made a run for it, uh, but nobody made it close to 10,000 ideas. Uh, but we did have, I think, 10 staff that voted over, on, on over a thousand idea pairs, which is remarkable, uh, in terms of an investment in really wanting to, um, have their voice, their voice heard. Uh, overall, we had 505 staff that participated in this process, which is, um, over a third of our total contracted staff. Uh, we know we skew teacher-heavy. I think we, we hit well over 50% of our teachers in this process, but I, I, we're really trying to break this down to look at our total, uh, staff that we have in this district, um, because we wanna make sure custodians feel like they have a voice here, that our nutrition staff feels like they have a voice, that our nurses, uh, our bus drivers, that everyone who works for our district feels like this is a platform that they can move forward. And it's really fun, I think, for all of us to walk around and hear people, um, like I, something would come up and people would be like, "Oh, you should Big Sleuth that idea." And it was fun to see that become part of the language, uh, so quickly for people. And, um, I met, I was out, I was outside the district, um, at a different event and met somebody who was like, "Oh, I've got a friend who works in White Bear. Uh, she loves working there. She really feels like her voice is heard in the district." And I know there's a million things happening in the district that are, that work towards that thing. And I think the work we're doing with the Big Sleuth is just one small way that we're helping voices be heard. And, uh, and it's impactful. So we're excited about that. Uh, overall, our staff voted on 66,000 pairs of ideas. Uh, so, uh, a big investment in time. The average person who voted, voted a little over 100 times, uh, a little over 100 pairs. They had a couple of weeks to do it. So people just kind of go in and kind of click through them. Um, that was great. Uh, and people were very, very engaged in that process. Uh, from those votes, uh, every, every time you voted on an idea, it got an up, so if you, if you, if you were presented with two ideas and, and you picked idea B, that got an up, that got an up vote. And then what we measured was that up percentage, which, which ideas had the biggest up percentage, which ones got voted up the most number of times. The system tries to evenly distribute all the ideas so that every idea gets voted on a similar number of times, but, you know, it's just mathematically, we'd have to like, it would have to have the exact number of voters to make that happen. So, um, so instead we work on that up vote and came out actually pretty clear, um, through the vote count as well. What we said is, um, that after staff voted on the ideas, we'd advance one big idea, two medium ideas and three small ideas. The other 137 ideas that are not going through the idea, uh, through the design process that I'll describe here, um, those ideas will be handed, uh, to principals and to department chairs in a ranked list of, from, from your building, here's a ranked list of the ideas that got submitted, um, you know, tackle the ones that you can. And, and, and I think it'll give, uh, principals and department heads a really interesting way to have a conversation with staff. Um, and in the big idea ca- category, our, um, our one big idea that's moving forward is presented by a 4th grade teacher actually up at Onika. Um, and it deals with, um, mental health and, um, student mental health and how we provide services for, uh, mental health with staff. Uh, she's really, really excited to work on it. Uh, two medium ideas, uh, the first one from Beth Samuelson at the ALC. She's our chemical health, chemical health specialist. Um, uh, around, uh, really, uh, an idea that really deals with student dignity and its core, um, but, but her initial idea is to get a washing machine and dryer at ALC for students to use, uh, which would have a real impact there. Um, and then from Lindsay Lamours, um, to take a look at school times across the district, which I know you all have talked about. As a matter of fact, it was the project of our, um, previous student representatives to take a look at this. So, uh, this will be a good, uh, good way to resurface that idea and really try to get some traction around it. Uh, and then three small ideas. Um, our two biggest, our, our two ideas in this thing that got the biggest number of votes were, um, around recess. And, um, and Mary Malloy, uh, entered one of them, John Barnes entered the other one. And, um, because they were so similar in the way that they were written and because they were the two that were the highest, um, before I contacted anyone else who won, I, I contacted the two of them and just said, "Hey, would you, would you wanna work together on this? You certainly don't have to and I defer to you. And you can advance both your ideas if you want, but they, um, they know each other and we're really excited to work on their idea together." So, um, fun to see that moving forward and really trying to look at, um, at how we use recess in this district and what that, um, and, and who has access to that and for how much time. Um, Kelly Sokolowski, uh, from Willow, uh, presented one around flexible, um, professional development opportunities, which I think is a really interesting, uh, way. Uh, she had some really good ideas around how do we make sure that staff have all kinds of opportunities to strengthen their, their needs? And really, honestly, if you just think only about the presentations you've seen here tonight, there's a lot to know in this district. And if you're a staff member, finding creative ways to get that information out to staff would be really helpful. This'll be a great, um, a great chance to look at that. And then, um, Christina Kuhn from Central, uh, presented an idea that got just an unbelievable amount of traction from people and a ton of conversation around, um, yes, uh, those of you who've been teachers in this group know, like you get those packets after of all your pictures and you just put them in a truck. We, teachers don't need those like packets. And her thought was, why doesn't Life Touch donate those, that number of packets to students on free and reduced lunch instead of giving them to staff? We got some work to do with, um, Life Touch and see if that's even something that contractually they're interested in doing and what we need to do. But I think the broader question that she brought up around accessibility and what do students have access to and what are the opportunities and what are some of the barriers, um, those are all the questions that we'll be tackling as we, um, pursue, um, her project moving forward. So, um, just to tell you briefly then about next steps here. Uh, each of these idea champions, um, is now part of a design team. So these, um, these seven idea champions running these six different ideas. You'll have an idea champion, they, there be designed two, um, design thinking coaches that'll help them through this whole process. Those are district staff members. Um, they get to pick one staff colleague to work with and then three to five students that will help to influence their idea as well. Uh, so keep those people in mind as we go to this next slide. The design thinking process starts in December. So the first process here is, is to empathize, to go back, what is the root of the problem I was trying to solve and how can I better understand that? So the, um, idea champion, their fellow staff member, the two coaches and the students will have a list of about, about a half a dozen questions and they'll conduct interviews of staff and students across the district to gather more information around that. Then they'll define who's really having this problem, what does that look like? They'll ideate, okay, you came up with a great idea about how to fix this, are there other possible solutions here? And, um, and our goal is to have working prototypes in place at the end of this school year, um, for, um, as many of those ideas as we can pull off. So, uh, really exciting next phase here. And, um, and in terms of the, the, the real work of the Big Sleuth, it's honestly just getting started now that we've got these ideas and, um, and we're really moving in to make those work. I'm sure I will keep you updated about this, um, throughout the year because it's a real passion project for mine, but, um, but for now, um, except for the empathy work, there's not a whole lot happening until January when we, uh, pull those teams back together.
Questions, comments? Mr. Wilson?
To my eye, this is, this whole process you got on screen here is one step off of the scientific method.
Totally, yeah.
The one key step that scientific method incorporates that I see there is gathering more information. Um, is that part of one of your little...
Yeah, sure. Um, yeah, uh, this is really a more of a circle is probably a better way to, to draw this, um, because always, that's kind of part of like the prototyping phase is like, what's working here? And then you go back and you kind of reloop in. So you're always kind of relooping back through those first four steps and then doing a little test and then relooping back through again.
And communicating your results.
Exactly, yeah.
Other questions, comments? Okay, we're looking, oh, looking forward to you here, continuing to hear about the...
Thank you so much. Yeah.
Thank you very much. Is there anything else that we, that we need to discuss?
I have a comment. But a lot of the things we discussed tonight have really shown that we value the empowerment and agency in this district. And I think that's such a positive thing. So I just want to keep it up.
I've been looking for this sort of diversity for decades as my child went through, attending the all the Izzy in their school and all of the things you're looking for as a parent. And I think we have a wealth of wonderful resources here. I'm just very optimistic.
I just think this, the Big Sleuth, looking at these are some things like the Chinese could start times, depending on the way, and how these agents would vote. Coming from staff, that they voted on it makes, and that's why I love the, oh, you that's amazing. Makes, and it was in my job, but makes my role much easier for me. And I, you know, the recess makes kids smarter. I mean, just that whole idea of taking recess away from kids. And when Chris is here talking about restoring practices instead of punitive things, I, I, I think it's absolutely fantastic.
I think the intentionality around all of these different things, the, the, it's really a real intention of, you're doing to, 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 to get it to...
Thank you very much. With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chair, move to adjourn.